To wait for that item to come up and to address the council at that time. If you're here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Teresa, have you ever let us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Happy birthday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the agenda approval. Mike, are there any changes to the agenda?
I do not have any changes this evening, Mayor.
Counsel, any changes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote.
Martin.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is public communications. And the only item listed under public communications is a presentation on the state of the American Legion. Do we have anyone here? Sam, do we know who was going to make that presentation?
No.
Well, I don't see anyone here to do that, so why don't we move on? And if they come in, we can pick that up at the back end of the agenda. Is there? We're still under public communications, however. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Sam, vote, please.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda, we have four items under the non-consent agenda this evening. The first one is a second consideration of ordinance number 1103, amending ordinances numbers 487, 733, 790, 847, 953, and 997, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the amended Beaver Creek West Economic Development Urban Renewal Area in the city of Johnson County of Polk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, City of Johnson County of Polk, Johnson Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for the payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the amended Beaver Creek West Economic Development Urban Renewal Area.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
I believe the first reading was put before you at the last city council meetings, and there have been no changes since.
Counsel, have any questions? If not, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve second consideration of ordinance number 1103?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Sam, vote, please.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 5B, second consideration of ordinance number 1104, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the Northwest 86th Street Urban Renewal Area in the city of Johnson County of Polk, County of Polk, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, City of Johnson County of Polk, Johnson Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for the payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Northwest 86th Street Urban Renewal Area. Peter, could you make your items a little smaller and lengthier?
I think you have to blame Dave for this one. This is the same situation as the first item. Nothing has changed since the first reading.
Counsel, have any questions for Peter?
Peter, I'm looking at the map of this proposed Tiff district. And based on some news that was made last week, this appears to be the most successful kickoff to a district in the history of maybe even the state of Iowa. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And of course, the news that Tom is, or Councilmember Cope is referring to is?
Well, the decision by Fairway Corporation to relocate its corporate headquarters to Johnson.
Great news indeed. Any counsel, any questions for Peter? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve second consideration of ordinance number 1104?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sam, vote, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 5C, Consider Resolution Number 23-226, Establishing Private Properties to Be Designated for the 2023-24 Urban Bow Hunt Program.
Sorry, I timed that about right. Dave Kroll, Community Development Department, here to present to you the private properties. We have four properties currently that have applied to have hunters hunt their property. Those four would be Susan Atari property up on Coburn, the Jeff property, the Dustin Dersflinger property, and then also the Mr. Nichols property. You happy to entertain any questions you have at this time?
Counsel, have any questions for David? David, are these all properties that have had bow hunting on their properties before?
Yes. Each of the properties presented tonight have had bow hunting previously in previous years.
Any other questions for Dave? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Right behind you, Dave. Please state your name and address.
I'm Brad Hall. I live at 6940 Northwest Trail Ridge. In the property adjoining Susan Atari's there. So I'm Bradley Hall, right there. So I'm not comfortable with public speaking, so.
You're doing a great job.
Apologize. So it used to be before COVID that they would come around and gather signatures from the property owners adjoining, but that kind of went away with COVID. Last year, they sent out a letter, this letter. This year, we haven't received anything. And I've talked to David and my neighbor down here, and we haven't received anything. So I didn't know if there was a procedure change with this or not. And so, and this, the bubble that's drawn here around Robert Odell's property, that, I mean, the tree stand location is, there's not a whole lot of room right there. So I didn't know. It is Susan able to not be bubbled because of that? Because I don't know if that tree would even be in play at that point. And I don't know. That this year, the stand has moved. And so it's actually, it could be inside. So who's responsible for measuring the actual distance of the tree stand from the adjacent structures? And? Oh, and the, so the public urban bow hunt is on a separate meeting? And I just didn't know, curious why they're in separate meetings? And why there's, the public is a shorter season. It's by a couple of weeks, but then the private is slightly different. So I think that's, that's all I had. Thank you respectfully.
You bet. Thank you, Bradley. Yeah. We'll see if Dave can take a stab at responding to some of your questions. Good questions.
In the order that you had them there, Brad. So there was no procedure change this year. In previous years, before we approved the private properties, we checked to make sure that no adjacent property owner has changed ownership. So in this case, there was no letter sent out to the adjoining property owners, because in this case, there's been no change of ownership of any adjacent properties. So I guess we probably could have. Last year, I sent notice out because, one, I was new taking over the program, and I just wanted to ensure that everybody had been notified, because I know in the past sometimes people get a little bit upset. So that's to answer your question, number one. Number two, I was just looking at this before I came here tonight. On the Atari properties case, the hunter technically, without getting what we call a waiver of setback from this Bob Odell, could not hunt within this red line on Susan Atari's property, which is 7090 Coburn Lane. So if the hunter wanted to move a tree stand across, it looks like this little ravine or creek, he would have to get a signed waiver from Mr. Odell. And I'm not, I don't think that he has a signed waiver from Mr. Odell. So usually, we ask the hunter or the property owner to approach their neighbor to secure a 200-foot waiver of separation.
So this tree stand location, that's what's been identified by the property owner? Or how does that work?
That tree stand location, so last year, it was a new hunter that was hunting this property that took over from a longtime hunter here in Johnston. That hunter moved away. This hunter took over. He has some sort of a relationship with Mrs. Atari. And so he was, we were in constant contact last year. I, him and I, he called me several times on his cell phone. He wanted to ensure that he was going about this the right way. The previous hunter showed him the exact tree that he had sat in before, and he chose to use that tree last year. Now, he did call me several weeks back and was asking if there was any way that he could, you know, move around. And I said, well, you can move around within this area that's shown here, but other than that, you would have to get waiver of setback. He also doesn't hunt using a traditional stand. Some of the hunters use what they call a saddle, which is more like a sling, like an arborist sling, or a rock climbing harness, which allows them to move around rather than lugging a great big stand and moving it around.
But who would verify where this, where he's going to take his position?
I could go out and verify.
He leaves that sling there so he can?
No, no, the sling, they just carry it in.
Okay. So he could be up in any tree at whatever point?
Could be. I've asked those hunters that hunt with a sling. So if it's a normal tree stand, they attach a metal tag to it, so we can identify them as legally working in the program. So I've asked him to have that on his person at all times. I can ask him, you know, to come show me the trees that you want to hunt in, and I can verify that they're within a setback. Or I can say, hey, if you want to move around, you're going to have to get the waiver of setback before we can let you continue.
Or maybe he can just indicate on a map which trees he's looking at. Yeah.
From what I understand, basically beyond that red line to the south on the map, this area down here, this is a pretty steep ravine. And so this is on the up slope side, from what I understand. I've never personally been on this property. It's been hunted for like 13 years by the previous hunter.
What, how long have we been having the tree residential tree hunt program? You were part of the beginning group, right?
Wasn't from the beginning, but Johnson has participated in the program for 25 years. So we were, Johnson was in in 1998 when we started the urban development program. I don't know exactly when we started allowing private properties, but it may have been the whole time.
Quite a while. And have we ever had any? I recall an incident with what they call a gut dump being on somebody else's property. But has there been any other complaints about how this has worked? Any safety issues besides?
We've had no incidences of reported safety issues, whether it be a hunter or other person, you know, falling from a tree stand on somebody else's property. I personally have not heard of any issues with residents complaining about, you know, the entrails or anything left behind. We do have a safety meeting in which we brief the hunters that, hey, you know, you need to be discreet, because if there's any infractions, then either I won't let you participate in the program next year, or we won't have a program to participate in next year.
And ultimately, the reason we have the residential tree hunt is to protect people's property, because the deer are out there. And also, does it lessen the chance of accidents on the roads?
Yeah, ultimately, it's to control the urban deer population, which, if left unchecked, it will double in about three to four years.
Which I completely understand, but if you look at that bubble, it's such a small postage stamp, and then you're right, it's not recorded by the river, so that's all.
Why is there not a red bubble around Susan's? Because the property owner giving permission to a hunter to hunt obviously waives setback on their own property. Or sometimes it actually is the property owner who wants to hunt. Oh, Brad, to answer your other question. Where was I going with that? Lost my train of thought. Did the hunter reach out to you last year and communicate with you at all?
Yes.
I just, we had set up an arrangement where I asked the hunter to work with Mr. Hall to, you know, to text him before he hunts, so that there was any, ever any reason or an objection, then he could respond that way. So we try and do that if there's people that have concerns, neighbors, so that way the hunter can work with them directly to resolve any issues.
And I think that's over, you can't work in a game. And that's why I'm a little surprised we didn't get a letter this year or anything ahead of this. And for, you know, he said it's more like if you were coming on public land, he doesn't have a stand, right? That's why I'm saying.
True.
So, and he's already got a stand. So I don't know how, I don't know what the rules are.
Well, that's the question. The reason the season is different.
Oh, yeah.
Because on public ground, we allow, but we actually restrict the hunters from hunting until like October 1st, because they're in public parks, including Lou Clarkson, where they have softball activities and other activities that usually fall with good weather. So on private property, we don't ensure the same restrictions. Now, a homeowner can place any restrictions they want on the hunter that hunts their property, including days or times of the week, or neighbors that would, you know, maybe they have a, you know, a group that meets Wednesday evenings, and they could ask that the hunter not participate.
Brad, have you talked to the property owner and shared your questions or concerns?
I tried to, but she gave me her number, and it never goes.
I think, yeah, Brad is raising some good questions here. I think the one that I want to comment on is that even if the property owners haven't changed, Dave, you know, I think we should probably send them a letter and give them an opportunity to provide some comment.
I would probably do it definitely. I think that that's a, I think that's sort of a, I would, I think that's a sort of a, from a communication standpoint. That, and I also think frankly, it maybe isn't a bad idea for us to consider both the, when we approve the public and then private, do it at the same meeting. Just to, it's, because it can be confusing a little bit to people. And then it's sort of like, if you're interested in this issue, you know, okay, we're going to, we're going to consider this at the last meeting of the August every year, and so people can kind of be thinking about it, or some sort of standardized schedule.
I, in the past two years, I've tried to restrict only bringing properties through, so that I'm not coming through three meetings.
Right, right.
Private properties.
Yeah, and so maybe that's a reason, because the public ones, you kind of know well in advance, and private is sort of, you're getting applications. And so, so then that's a.
In fact, since these four, I've gotten two, two applications.
So that's kind of why it's sort of, it's an ongoing agenda item, because, as it, okay.
On that being, Dave, by the way, Mayor and Councilmember Cope, I fully support your suggestions or recommendations to notify. And especially in a situation where you have a hunter who is maybe even a little more mobile, you know, as far as that goes. But regardless of that, I don't think this is burdensome to notify those neighbors around, even if they're repeat in that regard. The question I do have, though, is, do we have an end date for those private applications? Can they continue to apply even into the season, so to speak?
They could, but last year, I limited it to only two council meetings that they could, because otherwise, it would just go on. It could go on forever. Somebody could decide. Just administrative, it creates a lot more.
How did you communicate to them that they had to have their applications in by certain?
Three of these people had all their applications in ahead of time. There's one person that I was waiting for a piece of paper, and it came in the date before council deadline. And then the two other properties, one of them's a new property, and because of the notification on us, I didn't try and push it onto this meeting. Twelve property owners.
Would it be helpful to use, just managing this program for us through some policy to set a deadline, or is that something that you have the authority to do?
Typically, I've just said, hey, after this date, I won't accept any more applications.
And that's on some written communication or on the website or something, so people know?
I basically did that for your benefit last year, because I feel like bringing, you know, three different slews of properties to you on three different counts.
All right. I think it, I think it makes sense. I think it would be a good policy, whatever you, whatever you need to do to, to set that policy and enforce that policy, let us know.
I also would just say, Mr. Hall, I really appreciate your attention to this issue, because clearly, based on our questions and our kind of pleading here, you're teaching us some stuff along the way, too. And so I think you're doing everything you can to be a good neighbor, and we appreciate that very much. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments, counsel? If not, do we have a?
Yeah. I'd like, I'll make a motion, but I want to, my motion is because the, I'd like to defer, remove the Atari property from the list, to have that brought back and allow and have all the neighbors be notified, so that we can, so that they'll have an opportunity to participate in the process a little more. So I'll make a motion to approve all the properties, with the exception of the Atari property at 7090 Coburn Lane.
I'm just trying to think procedurally, Councilmember Cope, would we be tabling that? Because we don't want, we don't want that individual to have to go back through the process.
No, I'm not wanting, right, right.
So a couple of years ago, we did table one.
Okay.
Fine. In this case, I'll just have you know that for private properties, the opening day, I think, is the 16th, which will be, you know, it'll only be a couple of days. Your meeting will follow three days after technically the opening of season. So nobody, those particular hunters will not be able to hunt that property until three days after, which isn't a big deal. Might be to them, but it's not a big deal in the grand scheme of things.
I want to make sure that the motion is to table just that one, right?
Yeah, just that one. The right, but to move forward with the other, other four, but and then to table the Atari one for consideration in our next.
The only concern I have with that is that this individual followed all the, he's followed the procedure, did everything that they needed to do.
And if nobody wants to follow this motion, they don't have to second it, and they will be defeated, so.
I'm just expressing a comment.
Right, right, yeah.
David, we will have two other properties that we will entertain proposals. At this point, you anticipate two weeks from now, or two weeks from Monday?
Currently, I have one.
Okay.
That I'm going. I have another individual that is asking around and likely will secure another property.
Okay. Okay.
So Councilmember Cope has made a motion to approve establishing three of the private properties as.
Isn't it four? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, three, okay. Sorry, my bad.
To be designated for the 23-24 Urban Bow Hunt and tabling the property at 790 Coburn Lane. Is there a second to that motion? The motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have another motion? A move that we will go ahead with the, I'm not sure what we call it, ordinance as written. Resolution number 23-226. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second further discussion.
And just as a further on, and I do acknowledge that while the Atari person did submit the paperwork, the fact that she didn't respond to the property owner contacting her is one of the reasons why I kind of wanted to defer on that, but I'm certainly willing to support this motion, so.
Well, Bradley, we do appreciate you coming tonight. We've had some really good discussion about this item, and has given us some additional things to think about, and we've made some suggestions to the staff on how to improve communications going forward. So hopefully, you can make contact with, is it Miss Atari? Susan Atari. Have a conversation with her, share your concerns with her, and, you know, keep the communication going with the hunter as well. And we'd appreciate your feedback along the way, if there's additional things you think we need to be thinking about. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Sam, vote, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 5D, Consider Approval of Claims in Amount of $388,743.05. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second discussion. Sam, vote, please.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
Cope.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Motion passed. City administrator comments?
I don't have any comments this evening. Nothing tonight.
Any staff have comments? Oh, of course, Matt always has comments.
I will start and end the meeting here. Just wanted to remind everybody that next Wednesday, September 13th at 5:30, we'll have our final open house for the citywide traffic study. Janet sent out an invite, a calendar invite for everybody, so if you don't have that, please let me know, and I will get it back out. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any other staff comments? Not?
Friday. I'll try to figure out the invitation issue.
It's on my calendar. City council comments. Councilman Evans.
I have nothing, thanks.
I'm ready.
I pass, thanks.
Cool.
I just want to congratulate the mayor on her recognition for honoring into the Women's Hall of Fame.
Thank you. It is, what an incredible honor. Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Burkhardt.
Thank you. Just one clerical issue. I know we kind of cut and paste our agendas, but that closing the meeting, the next meeting is not August 18th, so let's just catch up on that. I had to double check that, though. With that being said, though, too, our next meeting will be.
With that being said, though, too, our next meeting will be on a Monday. It will also be homecoming week, so I do want to stress to all in the city and certainly within the district to start checking your calendars for all the fun-filled activities that are going to be happening during homecoming week. I know the police have already checked their calendars to make sure that they're well in tune with everything that's going on. There's plenty of opportunities, including there is a parade on Thursday, the twenty-first, that will result in some road closures. There is a movie in the yard after that, all sorts of fun stuff going on to help kind of celebrate our community and certainly help celebrate our wonderful school district. So pay attention to those, if you would. With that being said, I yield, thanks.
Councilman Martin. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have someone in the audience that wanted to speak under public communication and miss their opportunity. I will, I just want to briefly say that I appreciate all the emails that are coming in based on a post that I put on Facebook and also sent out about the importance of tree preservation. And I think it's an important subject, and I don't know if I should have notified you guys ahead of time, and if you feel like, if I was going to shake things up and would have rather had a an indication of that, let me know. I don't mean to surprise you. That's all I have. We appreciate, you know, the concerns of all the residents on that issue, so it's good to hear from them. The only thing that I'm going to share tonight is we got notification today that the president of Kosovo, and I'm going to mess up her first name, Yosa Asmani, is coming to Iowa, and she is going to be spending the day in Johnston on October twenty-fifth. And we're working with staff, the Parks Department, to see if there is a location where we can host a lunch for her and invite all of the, you know, representatives from all the other sister cities to Johnston to spend an hour and a half with her. So October twenty-fifth, eleven thirty to one is what they're tentatively looking at, so. Anyway, just to kind of put that on your, on your mental calendars that we're going to have that opportunity again to host a pretty high official in the Kosovo government, so. Exciting stuff. I did, one other thing, Mayor, the tailgate, the Iowa Iowa State staff tailgate is this Friday, correct? And is it still start at noon?
Twelve thirty.
Starts at twelve thirty, and the location is where?
The yard.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm planning on coming.
Which team are you going to cheer for?
You know what. And we can feel pretty confident the sun will be shining.
Yes, we can. I hope so.
I don't think we'll ever see rain again. Don't say, yeah. With that, if there's nothing else to come before the council this evening, we will adjourn. Thank you very much.